We have over a quorum, the quorum is 150. So if you come in, start to take your seats. We're going to get started in just a couple of minutes. Couple of announcements. masks are required. And I see that everybody is following that and everyone else appreciates that. Thank you. The, there's no smoking, obviously. It's a community center. You have to have one of these to participate. If you don't have one of these, go back out to the registras and get one and register. If you're a non-voter, a little more difficult tonight. I usually put you in the bleachers over here to my right. I see these people who are sitting are voters, I assume. Are you voters in that section or non-voters? Non-voters, okay, great. So we still have a non-voting section. It's still immediately to my right. And anyone who is a non-voter, doesn't have one of these cards, please move to that area now. For those of you who are at a Howard's Town Meeting for the first time, let me just quickly tell you our rules of procedure. They are printed in the warrant. The selectmen have them printed in the warrant. In addition to that, they print the motion chart. The motion chart covers all procedural questions that we have at town meeting. We have a provision that if we haven't provided for one, and over the years, we have run into situations where we haven't, then we go to town meeting time. And that's our reference and we would consult with that and that would control. I read each article when it's called. And then if the Finance Committee has a positive motion, the bylaws directly to the Chairman of the Finance Committee who will make that motion. Once the motion's made and on the floor, then debate is available. If there is not a positive motion coming from the Finance Committee, I will look to the floor and anyone has a right to make a positive motion. If no one makes a positive motion, then our bylaw requires the Chair of the Finance Committee to move indefinite postponement. And that's the process that we'll follow on each article. If you'd now stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag, and do we have a flag I guess we'll pretend that we have one. I thought there was one up here. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Now, now recognize the town clerk and needed to set to read the return of the warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Harwich, Special Town Meeting Warrant, October 18, 2021. Barnstable County, to either of the constables of the Town of Harwich and said county greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet in the Community Center Gymnasium, 100 Oak Street, in said town on Monday, October 18, 2021, at 6:30 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. Hereof fail not to make return of the warrant with your doings thereon at the time and the place of said meeting, given under our hands this 20th day of September, 2021. Signed, Michael D. McCaskill, Mary E. Anderson, Larry G. Valentine, Donald F. Howell, Board of Selectmen. A true copy attested, signed David Robinson, Constable. September 24, 2021. By virtue of this warrant, this day I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Harwich qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Community Center Gymnasium, 100 Oak Street, in said town on Monday, October 18, 2021, at the time and the place for purpose herein named up by posting up attested copies thereon in the four post office buildings and in the town hall in the Town of Harwich, which covers all four precincts at least 14 days before the time of said meeting as within directed, and causing an attested copy thereof to be published in the Barnstable, I'm sorry, in the Cape Cod Chronicle, published in Barnstable County, and having its circulation in the Town of Harwich. Signed, David Robinson, Constable.
Thank you, Mrs. Doucette. So I'll remind everyone that we do have a time limitation on each article. Speaking is limited to 10 minutes and not more than two times speaking. And I will keep an eye on that this evening. We have 14 articles and I have every reason to believe that, and indeed it is my goal, to get through those as expeditiously as we can. And for those of you who are fans, gets you home in time for the Red Sox game. Article 1. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to obtain engineering services needed to update the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, CMWP, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Mr. Chori.
Good evening, John Chori, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that the sum of $250,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Do you have a copy of that? Motion's made under Article 1. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $250,000 and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. I have been asked to recognize Dan Pelletier, who is our Superintendent of Water and Waste Water here in the Town of Harwich. Dan is not a resident and therefore not a voter, and so he needs permission from the body to speak. Any objection to hearing from Mr. Pelletier on this Article 1, Article 2, and Article 4? Hearing none, Mr. Pelletier.
Good evening, I'd just like to offer an explanation to the voters. The current CWMP was adopted in 2016. Funds approved under this article would be used to review and update various components of the CWMP, including growth assumptions, enhanced innovative alternative septic systems, regionalization opportunities, project cost, and project timeline. Updates to the CWMP would be done in coordination with the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, or MEPA Office.
Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. Is there any further debate on the motion under Article 1? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. Clara McCarty from East Harwich. I support this request to fund a revision of our wastewater plan. One of the key items in this proposed revision is a fresh look at build-out assumptions. We all know about the pollution of our water as an ecological issue, but not as many people make the connection between development and water pollution. Forested land and healthy soil filter and clean water as it flows through. Paved surfaces, rooftops, fertilizer, and septic systems all contribute nitrogen. So, the development of open land contributes to our problems in multiple ways. I'm eager to see a revised sewer plan that protects land in order to protect water quality. Our current plan unfortunately does not. It contains projections of future building far beyond what current zoning would even allow. It does not implement land use controls, this is a well-established term, referring to methods that prevent nitrogen pollution by limiting harmful development of land. I came to understand this connection when a 100-unit 40B project was proposed in East Harwich. I was concerned that the project didn't really meet affordability needs, but it would cause significant environmental harm. So I thought, how can we just add wastewater flow from 100 apartments to our new sewer without that displacing some other homes? Doesn't the sewer have limits to how much flow it can take? I thought that adding an unexpected 100 dwellings would surely be a problem and would take away capacity that was needed elsewhere. This was the start of my education. I read documents on the Pleasant Bay Alliance website, which led me to read our CWMP and the scientific reports from the Massachusetts Estuaries Project. I was shocked and angry to find out that many East Harwich residents were being forced to hook up to the sewer in order to allow for 41% growth in our watershed. Then I learned that citizens had tried to protest this pro-developer plan for years and were railroaded by the authorities. I'd be happy to share a copy of their excellent letter dated 2013, endorsed by the Harwich Conservation Trust and the APCC, with anyone interested. I don't believe that the trade-offs between cost to taxpayers, costs to environment, and benefits of growth have been evaluated accurately in our current CWMP. I don't think the interests of the majority have been represented in our sewer planning so far. So I want to see this revision, address build-out assumptions, and properly evaluate the latest innovative alternative systems also. But I am really worried that we're just going to get a phony look at these things. I ask all of you residents to get involved in this revision process. Development and endless growth are entrenched assumptions at this point, and we will need intentional effort to turn that tide. Please join me not only in voting yes for revision, but also in participating to your fullest ability in the upcoming meetings for revision, striving for a more equitable outcome and a plan that truly protects our environment. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 1?
Hi, my name is Roseanne Shapiro, and I just want to make one comment. I listened twice to Dan Pelletier's podcast, most recently today, and was very pleased that one of the things he mentioned was input from the public on the revisions. And I know in the past, public input has not always been honored respectfully, and I would just like to make a point of saying that when we have public meetings and people express their ideas and their input, that these are taken into account because we live here and we are the ones who are most affected by any changes in this plan. Thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, in the back.
Hello, Patrick Otten from East Harwich. This is probably the most important article we're going to consider today. It is the plan that will develop Harwich for the next 40-plus years. Before we do anything else, we need to get the plan in place so we know what we're doing tomorrow. So please, your vote is very critically important on this, that we have a plan first and then we move forward. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article 1? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion's accept and adopt, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
My apologies. And I also want to suggest that I have a white card, so I need to be given permission. I am the managing partner at the Waquasit Resort and Golf Club, have been here for 36 years in that capacity, and I also have a home in East Harwich and live full-time here, but I vote in Boston, so, because I live there as well.
Any objection? What's your name, sir?
Mark Nevada.
Oh, sure. Any objection to hearing from Mr. Nevada? The floor is yours.
Thank you for your courtesy. I just want to express my support on this article and to suggest how important I feel it is on behalf of the community, both as a resident and as an operator, that struggles at times to make certain that we have wastewater management at its highest level. I have been involved recently in litigation and we operate a wastewater treatment plant. We want no more, no less than full support to develop a comprehensive plan to put forth the best possible steps to ensure that our community is protected as we are developed and move forward. And I very much think, having spent time learning about this, that this is something very important for our community and I'm in full support.
Thank you. Mr. Vow, I will ask you, you've got to sit in the non-voting section, if you would please, just if we get to counts and so forth, it becomes more difficult if you're not. Thank you again. Any further debate on the motion under Article 1? I'm going to put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. Article 2. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to obtain engineering services for additional wastewater collection system in the East Harwich area, including permitting and design, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Positive motion? Mr. Chori.
I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and the sum of $2,100,000 be transferred for free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 2 is accept and adopt. The sum is $2,100,000. It's proposed to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Again, Dan Pelletier, our Superintendent of Water and Waste Water is asked to address the meeting on this article. Mr. Pelletier.
Evening, thank you. Funds approved under this article will be used to complete wastewater collection system design in East Harwich within the Round Cove and Pleasant Bay subwatersheds, the former Phase 3 area. Future wastewater flows generated through this design will be treated under the existing intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Chatham. The proposed area to be sewered contributes nitrogen to an impaired water body, Pleasant Bay, regulated by a watershed permit with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The design of this collection system will keep Harwich on track to meet its obligations under the watershed permit. With the prospect of a federal infrastructure bill, the town looks to develop shovel-ready plans to take advantage of any available state and federal funding opportunities that may arise. Residents should consider that a vote to fund this design will likely result in a future request of approximately 30 to 40 million to fund construction. To supplement the explanation in the motions book, I'd also like to add the following for consideration. The proposed area for design is shown on the second page of the motions book and located to the north of the Phase 2 area that was recently constructed. The collection system design proposed under Article 2 is intended to meet the baseline nitrogen removal requirements identified in the town's watershed permit and does not account for new or future growth. Consideration of future growth will be evaluated under revisions to the CWMP and incorporated at a later date. The watershed permit identifies nitrogen removal requirements within four subwatersheds in East Harwich. Current data suggests the work completed in Phase 2 has met or exceeded our nitrogen removal requirements in upper and lower Muddy Creek subwatersheds. Funds authorized under Article 2 are for the purpose of developing design drawings within the Round Cove and Pleasant Bay subwatersheds to meet the requirements of our watershed permit. Thank you.
Any further debate?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. My name is Noreen Donahue, and I'm one of your Water-Wastewater Commissioners. Recently, the Board of Water-Wastewater Commissioners voted unanimously to support this article. As one who's been working on wastewater issues and the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan for over 10 years, I'm thrilled that we're proceeding with a review of the existing plan. I invite investigation into new technologies that may be suitable for the town's needs and may turn out to be less expensive and less invasive than a sewer system. That said, I believe the right path in East Harwich is to finish the searing needed to bring nitrogen levels to an acceptable amount in the Round Cove and Pleasant Bay subwatersheds. We've already contracted with Chatham to accept the flow from this area. We can proceed with completing the Pleasant Bay remediation concurrently with the review of the CWMP, which could take longer than the year estimated. Although we would all love to see a federal infrastructure bill, as we would definitely be in position to receive funds, since water and sewer projects always get a high priority, we must have the design completed to be shovel-ready. And if Congress fails to pass anything, we would still have the advantage of lower costs by proceeding now rather than two years from now. This plan would then be incorporated into the revised CWMP, buying us more time to open up discussion of new areas and new methods. I believe we're all aware that we received poor counseling on the course taken thus far to lower the nitrogen in our embayments. But let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Although there are elements of the intermunicipal agreement with Chatham that may have been more advantageous, let's finish this area and take advantage of the agreement we have in place. I urge you to vote yes on this article.
Further debate? Yes, sir.
Senator McCarty, East Harwich. A wise man once said, "Life is like a sewer. What you get out of it depends on what you put into it." Sorry. So far in East Harwich, sewer, the sewer project has had a lot of crappy input. We got crappy results. Excuse the pun. We just approved a long overdue revision that we, the citizens, demanded, and now the leadership wants us to move ahead before the revision. They cry about deadlines and promise savings. It's not an apology for the $10 million that, in Phase 2, an apology for oversearing East Harwich, Upper Muddy Creek, or an apology for not evaluating alternatives. I say you don't get to pass go, you don't collect $200. We need good input before we can expect good output. We need to finish the new CWMP revision before we move forward. Something to consider, I was reading the IMA agreement with Chatham last night, and that's what geeks do, and once we get above about 80% of capacity with the permit in Chatham for their facility, they look to start bringing those flows back to Harwich. Nobody's talking about recharge. If we go ahead with this project, it could be that tipping point that forces us to have to pay for that recharge. And where are we going to put that recharge, I ask? Not in my backyard, right? That's what everyone says. The other thing is, one of the essential components in the revision is to evaluate alternative technologies. If we go ahead with this motion, you have to have the assumption that sewers are the answer. And I'm sorry, that's a phony evaluation. You've got to do the evaluation. We've heard from many people that IAs are three times the cost, two times the cost. I've talked to, you know, people at the Cape Cod Alternative Testing System, Scott Horsley from Wellfleet, who's running the water plan with their alternatives. I've talked to many, many people. George Hoyfelder, who lives and breathes this stuff. And there is an honest debate to be had. Doesn't mean that I'm right, doesn't mean they're right, but let's have that honest debate. Let the people decide what we want to do. And then we can, you know what? We can all pull together and get this done. So vote no with me, and thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 2? Yes, ma'am.
Clara McCarty. The same group that wishes to oversear in Upper Muddy Creek, which is talked about in Article 3, thus enabling developers to profit at our expense, cannot be trusted to design this next phase for East Harwich. The plan that we have written and in place is for 41% growth in the Pleasant Bay watershed. They'll tell you that they do not intend to sewer for growth, but until a new plan is signed and agreed upon, we do not have any guarantees. We cannot revise something that is already built. My trust has been lost, not in any one particular individual, but in a system which views environmental degradation as a necessary evil and gentrification of our community as inevitable. I won't support funding the ongoing building and design work. Please stand with me to demand that this upcoming revision must be a meaningful change. The early planning stages were omitted, and we can't build on that flawed foundation. Before Dan's statement tonight, the article itself doesn't even specify which watersheds in East Harwich we are designing for. I think they do intend to sewer Bascom's Hollow as a favor to a developer. At minimum, it should state that design work will only be for Round Cove and Pleasant Bay subwatersheds and not for Bascom's Hollow. The other argument in favor, the hoped-for infrastructure money, is an uncertainty. But rushing the planning work is certain to have negative consequences, as we've already seen. Reminds me of when a car salesman promises you a special price if you act now. Just don't fall for it. Vote no.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am, in the middle here.
Debra Ennis. And I'm here as a representative of the Harwich Climate Action Network and want to make the connection between wastewater treatment decisions and the environmental climate emergency that we're living in the midst of. And I want to say that planning for the future is more than about planning for growth, that it's just as important to take in mind how the way we're treating our wastewater affects the integrity of our fragile ecosystem, and to take all available options, including integrative technologies, or IA, which I'm still learning about all of this, but alternative options into account. And that the whole idea behind being aware of the environment is to, you know, traditionally reuse, recycle, and renew, or there's a third R. Reduce. And so I'm just confused about if we just agree to pass Article 1, which says we need a revision, how can we vote $2 million for Article 2 when we don't know what the results of the review for the CWMP is going to be? And so I just invite others to join us. If you're interested in pursuing this or learning more, which Dan mentioned is a strong part of Article 1, is to have citizen input, please contact me or other members of Harwich Climate Action Network and learn how wastewater decisions are related to the climate emergency. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article 2?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Carol Ridley, Coordinator for the Pleasant Bay Alliance and also an East Harwich resident. And I'm here to speak in favor of this article. This article is an important component of the town's compliance with the nitrogen removal requirements as specified in the Pleasant Bay watershed permit. This article is broadly worded, and there are a couple of points that Dan Pelletier made earlier that I would like to reiterate for the record for town meeting. First is, it's been noted Pleasant Bay has four watersheds. Two of those watersheds have been addressed through the searing under Contracts 1 and 2, Lower Muddy Creek and Upper Muddy Creek. And Lower Muddy Creek, as a result of that searing, we've met our nitrogen removal requirements under the watershed permit, and we've actually exceeded them in Upper Muddy Creek. Now, there are two other subwatersheds, Round Cove and Pleasant Bay, and thus far, the Contracts 1 and 2, that searing has done nothing to remove nitrogen in those two subwatersheds. So that's an unmet challenge that we have ahead of us, and this article is specifically for the removals in those two subwatersheds. I think it's also important to note that what's being proposed here is searing to design only amount of nitrogen removal that's needed under the watershed permit. So we are not talking at this stage about creating sewer capacity beyond that. And I want to note, because there have been a couple of references to the fact that we have a planning effort, which was just passed, the revision to the CWMP. That effort is not going to change these removal needs. We are going to need to remove this nitrogen from those two subwatersheds, and that will not change as a result of the CWMP revision. I also want to note that the watershed permit, the nitrogen reductions under the watershed permit, are for existing load. So these removals do not take into account watershed load removals from any future growth. And that's a very important question. We already have load removals we need to make, but we have to be mindful, that we also have to think about what's coming down the road in the future. That's where the CWMP review process really comes into focus, and as has been pointed out, will be an opportunity to look at the ways that we will address that future growth and that future additional watershed load. Now, for example, that will create opportunities for us to look at ways to repurpose some of the excess capacity, flow capacity, that was purchased as part of the contract with Chatham. And there are a number of creative options under discussion, and that's an important part of the CWMP discussion. You know, it's also going to give us an opportunity to think about how or if innovative alternative septic systems work into the picture. And they may well be a component of future phases of the plan and may, in the future, be a way to offset or perhaps avoid certain phases of later searing in the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. But I do want to note that one of the Pleasant Bay communities, Brewster, wanted very much to implement a municipal IA program. And working together with the other Alliance towns, we conducted a study. We had some of the best engineering firms around involved, Wright Peers, Horsley Whitten, and also worked closely, a partner in that study was the Barnstable County Health and Environment Department, George Hoyfelder. And what we found on the course of that study is that And what we found on the course of that study is that there are a lot of challenges to implementing a municipal innovative alternative septic system program. In order to get the credit from Mass DEP for that type of system, you have to have a very specific structured program to do that. And there are a number of challenges that were identified that have to do with the kinds of technologies that are permitted to achieve the removals needed and some of the cost considerations and monitoring and maintenance for a municipal program. So it's not as easy to say that that's a substitute for what's being proposed to remove nitrogen load from the Round Cove and Pleasant Bay subwatersheds. So in closing, I just want to say that, um, you know, this, this is an important article. It's important. Harwich has made a strong commitment to cleaning Pleasant Bay and addressing the nitrogen pollution in that beautiful body of water. If we delay tonight, we delay that progress. And I urge you to support this article. Thank you.
Further, further debate on the motion under Article Two? Anyone else? Gentlemen in the middle here.
Hello, again, Patrick Otten from East Harwich. I guess I'm confused. Article One for $250,000, we get a comprehensive, that's a comprehensive plan for all of Harwich. This article, for $2.1 million, only does a subset of East Harwich. And East Harwich is what? How many little towns are there in Harwich? Six, seven? I don't remember. But I don't understand the money difference. How do we get a comprehensive plan for $250,000? And this, a design plan for a subset of East Harwich for $2.1 million? That's a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pelletier, can you respond to that question?
Yeah, so the $250,000 that was approved for the CWMP revision is to ultimately make revisions to the larger document that ultimately cost the town just over $2 million through work with CDM Smith. The article before you, Article Two, for the $2-plus million is to complete the actual design drawings to develop a project that we could put out to bid, a shovel-ready project, similar to what we advertised for Contracts One and Two of Phase Two. So that's where the price difference is.
Thank you. Any further debate on the motion under Article Two?
If I can also add one other component?
Mr. Pelletier.
So just in response to the use of IA systems in East Harwich, presently, there's no IA system approved for general use by Mass DEP that has the capacity to meet the removal requirements in our watershed permit. There are some new IA systems on the market with better removal rates. However, they're only approved by Mass DEP for provisional use. Residents should understand that using an IA system under provisional use comes with some risk to the taxpayers. If nitrogen removal requirements are not met with the provisional systems, we will be required to go back and remove that nitrogen through other means. It is also uncertain whether or not provisional use systems would be eligible for low-interest loans through the state revolving loan fund.
Thank you. Further debate, Mr. Ballantyne?
Thank you. I urge you to support this. I don't see this as being in conflict with the Article Number One, because they work together. We can be looking at the design of this as we're revising the CWMP to update it. As Dan's mentioned, the CWMP is now 15 years old. It was always meant to be a living document, and we have gained more information. I, I think it also should be made clear that there is a place for seuring, and there is a place probably for IAs. Where you have high-density areas, the seuring makes sense because it doesn't cost as much to put pipes in the ground. Uh, less dense areas, we, is a perfect spot to look at more IAs when they become, the technology catches up with it. But we can move ahead on that. I'd like to clarify one other thing that keeps coming up. As I think Dan has mentioned, and Carol as well, there's no intent right now to do seuring above what the current needs are. The CWMP did include some growth factors based on the current zoning. In other words, you could do it with or without anything we're doing regarding seuring. The one exception to that was to increase the possibility for growth in East Harwich based at the time of using, uh, a committee looking at, and the Plowing Board went, suggested this as well, using so-called smart growth, which was, uh, and is, a direction that EPA and the various environmental groups would like us to take. That's not going to happen there. Obviously, the town's not ready to have that type of, of growth, which would include some higher density, surrounded by greater open space. We're not, but that's not part of this. If you take that apart, uh, we should do this. It allows us a chance to look at not only the CWMP, as Patrick mentioned, which is for the town in its entirety, but for this area to work with the Pleasant Bay watershed permitting process. Which, by the way, thanks to the Pleasant Bay Alliance and the various regulatory groups, gives us a way to move forward to protect this watershed. In turn, the regulatory agencies have said they will work with us to give us, give us a time and a regulatory allegiance, if you will, to remove the action that we so much need to do. But again, I hope that you approve this so we can move forward.
Further debate? Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I really wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but since a member of the board has affirmatively talked about this article, A, want to inform you that from the time that the warrant was published until tonight, I've changed my vote and am not supporting this. And I'm not, not supporting it because of a lack of need, but this is somewhat missequenced. In order for us to know what we are going to sewer, we have to know what we want to look like in 10 or 15 or 20 years. We're supposedly coming up with a revision of the comprehensive plan for the town, not the Comprehensive Wastewater Management, but the comprehensive plan. What do we want to do? Where do we want to build? What do we want to protect? That hasn't happened yet. Derivatively, once that occurs, we were going to revise the Comprehensive Waste Management Plan, the CWMP so-called, in order to align with what we are trying to do. I'm not saying that this isn't the right action to take, but it's really not sequenced properly. We really should be talking about this in another six months or a year when we get something that looks like a plan. I have to say that it's kind of lonely on my side of the sewer line here because I voted against the East Harwich plan too, knowing that we were spending out every penny, but we weren't finishing what we promised town meeting. I don't want to go down that road again. If we're going to be doing this, make it based on something. I, I, I think we can all agree that we weren't overly confident with the engineering that was done in the prior plan. We're not planning on pursuing any future revisions with them. So I say wait to find out what we really need to do until we get told by somebody, and this is factually based on something. Thank you.
Further debate? Mr. Weiser?
Bob Weiser, Birch Drive. Can I remove this so I can hear myself and understand what I'm saying?
You can while you speak, Mr. Weiser.
Thank you. Is that any better? It is for me. Anyway, thank you for recognizing me, sir. I rise to oppose the approval of this article. I think Mr. Howell said it quite clearly, actually, that we are in a situation where we want to do the right thing, and people have been trying to figure out what the right thing to do is for quite a long time. And we find ourselves in the unenviable position of coming back to our original plan to revise it while at the same time, we're looking at a commitment of perhaps $40-plus million for an additional piece of seuring in East Harwich, which may or may not turn out to be the right thing to do, which may or may not turn out to have been the right strategy to be following for the last few years. So I think it's in our best interest to hold off on this article for now until we have a chance to examine what innovations are available beside seuring. And secondly, to look at the numbers. There's an old adage that I hear attributed to Mark Twain about the difference between lies, damn lies, and statistics. I don't want to engage in discussion of lies and damn lies, but I do want to ask about statistics. It's my understanding that the zoning, as it exists now, would allow for approximately 13% growth in this part of town. Yet we seared so far in the area that's been seared for a 41% increase. Those numbers are a much too large discrepancy to be incidental. And I think we need to look at things like that. If we do not want to have 41% growth, that's a lot of growth, folks. If we are not looking at 41% growth in our town, then we better look carefully at whether we want to spend $40 million on the current, uh, proposed proposal, if you will. I think this needs to, thanks, Billy. I think this needs to have further evaluation from Article One rather than be approved tonight. I strongly urge people to vote against Article Two. Thank you.
Anybody further? Got this woman over here.
Hi, my name is Patty Gregory, and I just have a provision of, how about we all think about our green lawns versus how much we love Cape Cod? All this talk about nitrogen, a lot of the nitrogen that's going through is from our green lawns, from fertilizing the town fields and everything. We live on a very sandy soil. We don't, we aren't meant to have all this. And all this nitrogen that's going in, Long Pond, we have to pay thousands of dollars every year to put alum in, the Town of Harwich does, to kill some of the algae that's in there. That is, you know, a lot of it's from the sewers, but it's from people using too many fertilizers. This is Cape Cod. Live with it. It's, we have to pay the money to take it out, and it's killing Pleasant Bay. It's killing Long Pond, and it's certainly affecting everyone. Thank you.
Mr. McCaskill?
I just asked if we could call up the ability to speak about the previous speaker's comments about 41% growth, because it was an inaccurate statement. I'd like Dan to correct that.
Okay. So I've had a request from Selectman McCaskill to have Dan Pelletier address the statistics utilized by the previous speaker, the 41% growth in East Harwich. Mr. Pelletier, can you address that specific question?
Yeah, so the 41% growth that was referenced is specific to the Upper Muddy Creek sub watershed. As I previously noted, there's four individual subwatersheds in East Harwich. And the proposal under this article is to sewer the Pleasant Bay and Round Cove subwatersheds, accounting for no new or future growth.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter Dubacher, Edith's Grove Road. I hear many different aspects of this program. I hear the, the CWMP. I'd like to remind people that Article One is an update of that program. And as several people have mentioned, it was always a living document to start with. So we knew from the very beginning, the Wastewater Committee, of which I was a member, that this would be updated and had to be updated as time moved on. So I want to emphasize, this is an update. I don't think that Article One is meant to totally upend the entire program. That has been filed with the state, accepted, and as a result of it, we got a lot of funds, and we have been able to move forward. And at various town meetings, the town membership, the town citizens, have voted to support large investments in that program. I hear about the local comprehensive plan. And Mr. Howell says, well, let's wait. It begins to sound a bit like the federal government. We wait and wait and wait, and nothing happens. First of all, that new program has not been initiated yet. It will take several years before that will be finalized. Then it has become for the voters to be approved, and on we go. We lose momentum. We lose the vision to indeed move forward in that. With respect to the whole program in and by itself, as build-out and what have we, that is based on zoning. Zoning is the driving issue with respect to how much can be built. Even from that point of view, and that's the way that the CWMP was based on. And even from the zoning point of view, it is the citizens of this town that would have to approve any change in the zoning bylaws. Program is based on the zoning as it stands. Any delay now will take years before you catch up in the momentum to move forward in a positive way. Thank you. And I urge you to vote yes on that article.
Further debate on the motion under Article Two? Mr. Clary, you've already spoken once.
Yep.
This gentleman over here.
Simon Evans, East Harwich. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay, a motion's been made to move the question, which means to terminate debate. It's a non-debatable motion, requires a four-fifths majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on this motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
If it's not unanimous, I'll have to take a standing count. I'm going to try it one more time. All those in favor of terminating debate on the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
So if there are folks in the hall who want to volunteer to be tellers, I'm going to have to take a standing count. If you'd come forward, I need four. Ed? Okay. Dana? Okay, I've got four. Raise your right hand. I'd be solemnly swearing affirm.
I'd be solemnly swearing affirm.
That I were faithfully and impartially.
I would faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a teller.
As a teller.
Thank you. Okay, we're on Article Two. The motion is accept and adopt. The amount of money is $2,100,000. It's proposed to be transferred from free cash. All those in favor of that motion, please stand. Pardon? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're just voting, we're just voting to terminate debate. All those in favor of terminating debate, rise and show your voter card. Mr. Robinson? Eighty-one. Ms. LaFerris? Eighteen. Mr. McManus? Twenty-five. And Mr. DiCosta?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. All those opposed to terminating debate, those in opposition, please rise and be counted. Why don't you count them? Terminate debate, stand up. Six more. Okay. Anyone opposed to terminating debate, rise and be counted. One ninety-five? Mr. DeCosta?
Seven.
Seven. Ms. LaFerris?
Two.
Mr. Robinson? Eight. And Mr. McManus?
Two.
Two. It's fourteen. So those in favor, one hundred and ninety-five, those in opposition, nineteen, the motion carries. So now we're going to go to the main motion. We're on Article Two. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $2,100,000, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash. All those in favor, the motion's read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Article Three. Excuse me? Is somebody questioning the count?
Yeah.
If seven or more want us to have a standing count, we will. Do I see?
Yes, stand up.
Okay. I see seven hands, so we'll, if the same tellers are here, would you come back up, please? Same drill check, make sure they're on zero. Okay, great. All right, you're taking the prize. Okay, so we're on the main motion. Again, it's accept and adopt, it's Article Two, it's $2,100,000, and it's to be transferred from free cash. All those in favor, please rise and hold your voter card. All those in favor. Mr. Robinson?
Sixty-two.
Pardon?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Mr. DeCosta?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Ms. LaFontis?
Four.
Four. And Mr. McManus?
Seven.
Seven. Okay, those in favor of the motion, one hundred and sixty-three, those in opposition, fifty-eight, the motion carries. We'll now go to Article Three. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to obtain engineering services for wastewater collection system of approximately 5,500 linear feet of gravity sewer main on Continental Drive and Witta Drive, including permitting and design, including all costs incidental and related thereto and to act fully thereon. Finance committee does not have a positive motion. Mr. McClary, you have a positive motion.
I do. I move that we accept and adopt this article as it is written.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, it's been seconded. The motion's been made and seconded to accept and adopt the article as written. There's no funds in that motion. Just bring that to the voters' attention. I know there's an estimate of four hundred, but the motion doesn't move any money. Mr. McClary.
Okay, we want the voters to make it clear to the leadership that we do not want to install more sewer infrastructure in the Upper Muddy Creek watershed. We oppose this work even if there's money or old drawings available. In light of the commitment to take a fresh look at our CWMP, it is disappointing that the leadership intends to move ahead with this work. Carol Ridley and Dan Pelletier presented updated information to the Board of Selectmen this past August, showing that this area does not need more nitrogen removal. I would like to share two numbers. The first number is how much nitrogen we need to remove per year. It's 584 kilograms. The second number is how much we are already removing with no additional pipes in this area, 1,769 kilograms. This is three times the amount required to clean up the water. The Chronicle last week quoted Chairman McCaskill as saying, quote, "There is a small group of people who think we are over-suing," end quote. Anyone who has looked at these numbers and understands them is welcome to join our small but growing group of folks who know we have oversuited this area. Please join me in voting no. I will add that if the yes vote goes sue, there's no risk. They're moving ahead with this project. If we vote no, we can stop, we're looking to spend 1.5 million dollars or more that supposedly is left over from the last project. This is a lot of money, and I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to speak to the motion? The motion was to accept and adopt the article. Yes. Mrs. McClary.
I urge everyone to vote no. This watershed is being, having nitrogen removed 200 times more than required. That is before adding more pipes at Witta and Continental. This is a waste of resources, even if the funds were already appropriated in the past, and it's a betrayal. You're telling us that you do not wish to oversue, and that you're only suing the required amounts, and then moving ahead with doing this by trying to indefinitely postpone the article so that we don't even get to bring attention to it or discuss it. This is why there's a loss of trust. Please vote no to send a message. Thank you.
Just so people are not confused, the motion on the floor is to accept and adopt the article, and the last two speakers have urged you to vote no on that motion. So I just want everybody to know what's happening here. There's a positive motion, and there's been two speakers against the positive motion. Mr. Dubacher.
I urge you to vote yes, simply for the sake of being fair to the people who live in that area. They were included in the estimate for sewerage at the time, and the local, the CWMP, they, as far as I understand it, they incurred the expense of having surveyors done work to connect their house to a to-be-constructed sewer pipe. There were bypasses, because I understand last time, there weren't enough funds. I understand there's enough funds now, and it is only fair to the people in that area that they be suing. I urge you to vote yes.
Yes, Mr. Powers.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Joe Powers, Town Administrator, Precinct Four, North Harwich voter. I just moved, so I had to think about that, Mr. Moderator. First, I just, if I could, and, Mr. Moderator, I would hope and expect that you correct me if I say something procedurally incorrect, but the positive motion that we have presented this evening under Article Three is unnecessary insofar as the makers, who then spoke against it, I would argue it's a dilatory motion meant to cause something to not happen. If you wanted something to not happen, you do nothing. But I also heard a previous speaker say that we should adopt this motion, and I just may need to make clear that what was contemplated on the original article, as you see in the warrant, was a placeholder effort in case Dan Pelletier, our wastewater superintendent, was not able to get drawings that had already been acquired and purchased. We have those. We do not need the appropriation, because we have the drawings in question. That's why I would urge you to defeat this positive motion, because the motion for indefinite postponement says that we don't need the money that was requested under the article. And further, should we have an additional positive motion on Article Three, it is only relative to design documents. It does not get in any way, shape, or form to the discussion of construction. And therefore, I would urge the rejection of the positive motion. Indefinite postponement achieves what is already needed. We have the documents. Thank you.
If you vote no on this motion, and it does not carry, that ends the article. There won't be any need for indefinite postponement. You get to the same place. Mr. Weiser.
I hope that everybody is as confused as I am. So let me see if I understand correctly. Mr. Powers just spoke about why this motion is unnecessary, and therefore, we should vote against it. The people who requested that we actually have a vote on this have done the same thing. It sounds like everybody's in agreement, except those who want an indefinite postponement and don't want to vote. Does that make any more sense?
No, because indefinite postponement, Mr. Weiser, gets you in the exact same spot.
No, actually, it doesn't, because...
Yes, it does. If I can finish, please.
Okay.
Procedurally, if we had moved indefinite postponement and it passed, that would have been the end of the article. No action would have been taken under the article. It's gone. When you vote no, you're doing the same thing. We don't want to go forward with the article. It can come back at any time in any town meeting, but you're voting no. You get to the same spot either way.
You get to the same spot without the sense of the body as to whether or not they want to make sure that those who are in the process of moving this project forward know that there is opposition to it. That is why I believe it was moved in the affirmative to put it on for a vote, so that we could vote against it, so that we could make sure that it's understood that town meeting opposes going forward with this particular project. So I urge you to vote no, just as Mr. Powers did. And I disagree with you respectfully, Mr. Moderator, that there's no point in this. There is a point.
I didn't say there was no point. I just said you get to the same spot either way, indefinite postponement or voting no.
You get to the same spot without a vote of the body.
And just so people know, indefinite postponement, you get to vote on it, and you get to debate it. You could discuss it to the same extent we've been discussing the positive motion in the future, just so you know that. Mr. McManus.
The maker of the motion to have this voted as a positive motion, but suggest you vote no to indicate that you're opposed to the project altogether, a vote no doesn't say that. It says that you're voting against the appropriation, which is unnecessary, because we already have the plans in hand. So unless we have a situation where you have a yes vote, and then you have a no vote, I'm against the project, and I have another no vote that I'm against the appropriation, you really don't know how many people are in support of it and how many people oppose it.
Any further debate?
It won't be long, just, Mr. Moderator, when I say...
Mr. Dubacher.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My point was, whether I meant it to be yes or no, that funds should be available to make this project happen for the people in that area, because I, too, I'm confused.
You've already spoken once, so I'm letting people who haven't spoken. Noreen?
You know, I just want to remind people of one fact. I'm not sure myself how to vote on this to get what I need, what I would like accomplished, but just to remind people that we did vote on this back in 2018 for these two streets, Witta and Continental. We voted affirmatively, the money was appropriated, and that money is, in fact, still available. Yes, we've learned since then that, you know, there is an element of how much suing is needed. But nevertheless, after that vote by the town and by ballot, our representatives went out to these people's homes and instructed them to get their properties ready to be sewed, and they took action and prepared to do that. So I'm not going to stand here and say that we need to do these streets because we have to rid the area of the nitrogen they're producing, but I am going to stand here and say, we told these people, we voted, we voted in the ballot box, and we told these people what to do. So to me personally, it's a matter of good faith.
Any further debate? Mr. Weisberg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would normally move the question, but if we're going to go through the same parts that we went through 10 minutes ago, I won't move the question. Maybe it'll move the meeting along a little more quickly.
Thank you. Any further debate? Yes, sir.
My name is George Famili, and for total disclosure, I am a resident of Witta Drive. And as the woman stated just a minute ago, we were told by the town that we were going to get sewers. Well, it didn't happen, for whatever reason, somebody decided not to install in our street and Continental Street Drive. Well, for me, it's not a question of removing nitrogen. For me, it's a question of keeping our groundwater clean. You know, we may have met this statistic that the state required we meet. That's fine. But is the installation of a sewer only to remove nitrogen? I don't think so. I think that sewer systems remove more than nitrogen, and we should back sewer systems in densely populated areas so that we keep our groundwater clean. We live on Cape Cod. If you lose your groundwater, you won't have Cape Cod anymore, no matter what the price of your house. So it's my feeling, even though I, in this instance, I have a personal reason, yes, I want the sewer system. But greater than that, we need the sewer systems so that we don't contaminate our groundwater. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the middle.
Stamp House, to Zach, East Harwich. I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we terminate debate on the motion under Article Three, which is accept and adopt. It's a non-debatable motion, requires a four-fifths majority to pass, which means if it's not unanimous, I will take a standing count. All those in favor of terminating debate on the motion under Article Three, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. We'll now go to the main motion on Article Three, which is to accept and adopt the article as printed. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
Motion does not carry. Article Four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient... no to indicate that you're opposed to the project altogether, a vote no doesn't say that. It says that you're voting against the appropriation, which is unnecessary because we already have the plans in hand. So unless we have a situation where you have a yes vote and then you have a no vote, I'm against the project, and I have another no vote that I'm against the appropriation, you really don't know how many people are in support of it and how many people oppose it.
Any further debate?
This won't be long. Just, Mr. Moderator, when I say...
Mr. DeBakker.
Thank you. I appreciate it. My point was whether I meant it to be yes or no, that funds should be available to make this project happen for the people in that area. Because I too am confused.
You've already spoken once, so I'm letting people who haven't spoken... Noreen?
You know, I just want to remind people of one fact. I'm not sure myself how to vote on this to get what I need, what I would like accomplished, but just to remind people that we did vote on this back in 2018 for these two streets which are in Continental. We voted affirmatively. The money was appropriated, and that money is in fact still available. Yes, we've learned since then that, you know, there is an element of how much suing is needed. But nevertheless, after that vote by the town and by ballot, our representatives went out to these people's homes and instructed them to get their properties ready to be seored. And they took action and prepared to do that. So I'm not going to stand here and say that we need to do these streets because we have to rid the area of the nitrogen they're producing, but I am going to stand here and say, we told these people, we voted, we voted in the ballot box, and we told these people what to do. So to me personally, it's a matter of good faith.
Any further debate? Mr. Weisberg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would normally move the question, but if we're going to go through the same parts that we went through 10 minutes ago, I won't move the question. Maybe it'll move the meeting along a little more quickly.
Thank you. Any further debate? Yes, sir.
My name is George Famili, and for total disclosure, I am a resident of Witter Drive. And as the woman stated just a minute ago, we were told by the town that we were going to get sewers. Well, it didn't happen for whatever reason. Somebody decided not to install in our street and Continental Street Drive. Well, for me, it's not a question of removing nitrogen. For me, it's a question of keeping our groundwater clean. You know, we may have met this statistic that the state required we meet. That's fine. But is the installation of a sewer only to remove nitrogen? I don't think so. I think that sewer systems remove more than nitrogen, and we should back sewer systems in densely populated areas so that we keep our groundwater clean. We live on Cape Cod. If you lose your groundwater, you won't have Cape Cod anymore, no matter what the price of your house. So it's my feeling, even though I, in this instance, I have a personal reason, yes, I want the sewer system. But greater than that, we need the sewer systems so that we don't contaminate our groundwater. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the middle.
Stamp House, St. East Harwich. I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we terminate debate on the motion under Article Three, which is accept and adopt. It's an undebatable motion, requires a four-fifths majority to pass, which means if it's not unanimous, I will take a standing count. All those in favor of terminating debate on the motion under Article Three, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. We'll now go to the main motion on Article Three, which is to accept and adopt the article as printed. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Motion does not carry. Article Four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to obtain engineering services for Route 28 wastewater collection system, including design and permitting, and all costs incidental and related thereto and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article Four is accept and adopt. The sum is $200,000, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Any debate? Mr. Pelletier, our superintendent of water and wastewater, had a brief comment.
Thanks again. Funds approved under this article would be used to complete wastewater collection system design on Route 28 in West Harwich from the Dennis Town Line to the Herring River Bridge. Mass DOT is repaving the stretch of Route 28 in 2024. By completing the design and partnering with Mass DOT on construction, the town can save considerable money on trench paving and road restoration costs. Once Mass DOT completes its paving project, a road cut moratorium will be placed on this stretch of Route 28 for five years. It is the intent of this article to fund the design of a dry pipe to be installed for future use in seoring in the Herring River watershed. Reticents should consider a vote to fund this design will result in a future request of approximately $2 to $3 million to fund the construction. In addition, I'd like to also add the following. This past spring town meeting, voters funded the design for a water main replacement project in the same stretch of Route 28. Article Four provides an opportunity to complete both the water main project and the collection system as a combined utility project in partnership with Mass DOT. In addition to the cost savings already mentioned, completing the design and construction in partnership with DOT also eliminates the potential for delays associated with the future road cut moratorium.
Any further debate on the motion under Article Four? Mrs. McClary.
Clara McCarty, East Harwich. I am enthusiastic about the efficient use of resources and avoiding the repeated tearing out of roads. But I just don't know if a sewer pipe is actually needed in this location or not. Since we do need to revise our plan and we need to honestly evaluate alternative denitrifying septic systems, there is at least a theoretical chance that we do not need sewer pipes here. I've heard the argument made that it would be a shame to miss out on the savings opportunities available to us if we combine our sewer work with the DOT work. I agree, it is a shame. It is a shame that we do not have an acceptable plan in place after 10 years. And it's a shame that those in power have lost our trust in them to do what is best. They are planning to oversewer in Muddy Creek and focusing on procedural confusion rather than discussing the actual pros and cons. They have had an impromptu, on-the-floor discussion of the pros and cons of IA technology and had everyone vote based on that. That is a totally insufficient way to evaluate what our options are. It's ironic that East Harwich and Herring River watershed, the two watersheds in Harwich that had the most potential for growth and development are the very two areas that we are hastily, quickly getting pipes in the ground to reduce the possibilities of looking at any other ways of dealing with nitrogen in those watersheds. The remaining watersheds that we haven't even talked about pipes yet are the ones along 28, the harbors, where there really isn't room for growth and there really is a lot of nitrogen pollution, and we probably know that sewers will be the only remediation that's appropriate in those areas. So once again, here we are, closing in our options, having phony debate on the floor that most people can't even wrap their heads around. I know for a fact that most people do not comprehend the science behind the things that have been brushed over tonight. And I fully oppose this, as with everything else, because you've lost our trust, you're not even planning to truly reevaluate, and you're asking us to move ahead and just trust you when we have no reason to trust. Please vote no.
Any further debate on the motion under Article Four? Yes, ma'am.
Roseanne Shapiro. I would like to speak to what seems to be an issue of financial expediency, and it's not always the most important consideration. It seems as if the driving force in planning for this construction is a lot of maybes and might happen. Yes, it's true that once the Route 28 repaving is done, there's a five-year moratorium on breaking up the pavement, for example, to install new pipes, if that's what a revised CWMP would call for, and it would save money to ride on the coattails of the DOT financed project. However, we need to go back to Article One, which we've passed, and see how that impacts this project. Okay? And at this point, this particular project seems premature and costly and perhaps unnecessary and perhaps opening the door for unchecked growth. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article Four? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Susan Patterson, also from the Harwich Climate Action Network. And I just wanted to add that I don't want to approve the article because we have not yet explored other options, just as with the others. And to reiterate Mr. Howell's point, that we're basically once again putting the cart before the horse. We don't know yet how much seoring we're going to need in this particular watershed and a town comprehensive plan, more discussion, more information that residents can participate in the decision-making about the design and the planning before just having it, you know, having to vote with an urgent, false urgency because of the promise that we're going to save money when we may not need to spend all of this money in the first place. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article Four? Yes, sir.
Robert Lorfis, East Harwich. A question for somebody. I thought down by 28 was like Phase Eight, like 30 years from now, and if somebody could clarify that. And if it is, I'm sure that road will get ripped up at least two more times or three more times by 30 years. Thank you.
Mr. Pelletier, can you respond to that? The gentleman thought this area was in Phase Eight of the sewer plan.
Yeah, so part of what we're looking to get to with the CWMP revisions is reestablishing the phasing and the timeline for that. One of the things that we're also looking to do is explore regional solutions, likely with the town of Dennis, which could move that section of Harwich up closer as we share the border, and there's nitrogen removal that needs to take place on both sides of the town line within the Herring River watershed. I would also like to just point out that the 2012 MEP report on the Herring River watershed identified the southern portion, south of Route 28, as significant, reflecting a significant decline in eelgrass, which is due to the nitrogen loading from septic systems in that area. Also, looking at the lot size for the properties south of Route 28, I also believe it would be pretty difficult to accommodate innovative alternative septic systems, given the lot size in those locations. I would also like to emphasize, and if anyone doesn't want to hear it from me, I've also invited Brian Dudley from DEP here with respect to IA systems and the fact that right now there are none under general use that we can use that will meet our removal requirements.
Thank you. Further debate on this? Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think by this point you can understand that I'm not necessarily in the camp that just go ahead and build things for sewer infrastructure. And I hate to pull the carpet out from under some of my friends here, but let's look at some central facts. The five years isn't from today. The five years is when they finish paving that road, and I think that's likely to be seven years from now at a minimum. And there's seven villages, and there are numerous phases to the CWMP. I don't care whether we re-phase it or not, there are some central truths. One is, we haven't done anything at all in that area. Zero. Nothing. The road is going to be open, which means they're going to have to pay to rip it up. The road, once we put the pipes in, would be graded by the state, it'd be paved by the state. I take the long view on this. Anybody in this room who thinks we will never, ever have to sewer Route 28, by all means, vote against this. But look at this reasonably. It's dry pipe, folks. We're not actually going to be doing anything with it. We are planning for the future for something that hasn't even begun in that area. We've got an opportunity, and I think it's going to be a big savings for us. I think it's nonsense to say we're going to bury a pipe and it's never going to be used.
Further debate on the motion? Mr. McClary.
Yes. I can respect Mr. Howell's arguments, even though I differ. I think it's very reasonable. If I had to guess, we probably do need sewers in this area. It stinks that we have to guess at this point, that we don't have a plan in place. It has been mentioned by Mr. Pelletier again about IA's bringing questions to that, and it frustrates me that on the floor here, we're going to have an ad hoc debate about IA technology, when that's the whole point of Article One, one of the, remember, the two important driving factors. Look at your alternatives and look at your growth assumptions. When you look at the areas that have the greatest growth potential, as my wife said, the Herring River watershed is 29.2%. East Harwich was 41%. You go down the list, and the areas like Allen Harbor that require 100, I believe, Allen Harbor, Whichmere Harbor, and Sacquet-Tuckee. Allen Harbor is 100%, I believe, or it could be mixed. All of these are in the 70%, 68%. They're all super high levels of nitrogen, and we haven't begun to even talk about those tonight. And yet, we're going to these areas. The Cape Cod Commission targeted the Herring River watershed as the one area that if you curbed growth, you wouldn't even have to do anything in the area up by Great Western Road. But we're supposed to have this ad hoc debate here and settle the question when that's what we're paying engineers $250,000 to do. I'm very disappointed.
Further debate? Ms. Underhill?
Judith Underwood.
Underwood, excuse me.
That's okay. Judith Underwood, Harwich Center, one of your water and wastewater commissioners. And to talk about this particular West Harwich, not East Harwich, West Harwich, for those of you who don't know me, I actually do work with new technologies for water, and we could get Brian from DEP up here to talk in depth. And I don't want to go in depth, but what Dan Pelletier did say about West Harwich as far as the high water table and the use of IA systems, IA systems right now would not take care of West Harwich, and the research that's out there is probably at a minimum a decade away. They would have to be dry, sealed systems. It's just, so putting this dry pipe, meaning we're not going to use the pipe, we can plan around the pipe, but it's going to be a great savings. Let the state do the row, we can put that pipe in. I support this. This is a very different discussion from East Harwich. This is thinking forward. You know, I'm a great believer in roofs that are not flat. This is not making a flat roof or we're putting a pitched roof so we know that snow can fall off. So support this, please. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article Four? Yes, ma'am.
Is Carol there, Harwich Center?
Sorry, I didn't recognize you, Carol. Good evening.
I know, with all the mavs and all. This seems to be one of those rare instances where common sense, you know, would indicate the vote here. I mean, it seems improbable that the Herring River watershed wouldn't be seored at some point in time. We're talking about Bell's Neck people. That was in the paper today, if any of you saw it. The serenity and beauty of Bell's Neck. Well, this addresses that area as well. So I think we have a chance here to finally have common sense come to the front and prepare for the future. Thank you.
Further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote on the motion under Article Four. It's accept and adopt, and the sum is $200,000. It's proposed to be transferred from free cash. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no? It is a vote. Article Five. See if the town will vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, Paragraph Four, thereby creating a wastewater special purpose stabilization fund, with monies in said fund to be used, subject to appropriation, to implement the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, including the development of wastewater infrastructure, provided that 25% of the room's excise tax collected by the town in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, be dedicated to the wastewater special purpose stabilization fund without further appropriation, to take effect in fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022. Do I have a positive motion?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
The motion is accept and adopt the article as printed in the warrant. You rising to speak to it? Mr. Howell.
This article and the next article were sequenced specifically to lead into the third article after this. I was one of the holdouts myself for a number of years in adding an extra rooms tax. And in point of fact, a prior town administrator that actually spent it out before we even started collecting it, under the presumption that we'd adopt it. It shouldn't be just a slush fund to throw into the general treasury if we adopt that rooms tax. The Board of Selectmen decided to take the prudent approach that there are a couple of areas that we're going to bank the money to invest for the future. This is one of them, for wastewater. The next one is going to be for affordable housing. The purpose of voting in favor of this is, the money can't be dispersed without you folks appropriating it at a town meeting, once we adopt this. We're putting the funds that we're going to be getting from people who show up here who do flush toilets and are creating a problem, that we're going to put that into an account where it can actually help solve that problem. So this is your assurance that it's not going to be frittered away somewhere when we get to that article. These two articles are there because we wanted to make sure that you knew first where the money was going to be going.
Further debate on Article Five? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. This requires a two-thirds majority to pass its creation of a stabilization fund. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no? It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Six. See if the town will vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, Paragraph Four, thereby creating an affordable housing special purpose stabilization fund, with monies in the fund to be used, subject to appropriation for acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of affordable housing, available for occupancy by low and moderate households earning less than 100% of area-wide medium income, as most recently determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, adjusted for household size, provided that 25% of the rooms tax, excise tax, collected by the town in accordance with Chapter 64G, 3A, be dedicated to the affordable housing special purpose stabilization fund without further appropriation, take effect on July 1, 2022. Mr. Chori.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article Six be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, this is the creation of a stabilization fund, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no? It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Seven. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, to amend the local excise rate from 4% to 6% to take effect on January 1, 2023. Mr. Chori.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article Seven be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate?
Good evening. I'm Tony Guthrie. I am not a resident of Harwich, however...
Oh, before you go any farther than, Mr. Guthrie, we have a bylaw. I've got to get permission from the vote... I've gotta get permission from the voters to allow you to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Guthrie, you're a resident of?
Braintree, but I've worked in Harwich for over 25 years.
Okay, all right, so there's a nexus theory. Any objection to hearing from him? Floor is yours, Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you very much. So, as I said, I've worked and enjoyed Harwich for over 25 years. I managed great places like Waquasit Resort and Golf Club and Whichmere. And I wrote this letter to the editor, so I'll just read it. I wanted to express my complete disappointment with this article for a number of reasons. This article asked the good people of Harwich to vote for an article by which they are being bamboozled by the SLUCC board. They have given no proof or rationale as to why they need these additional dollars. Several years ago, the Chatham SLUCC board brought the same article forward to the town's people. Those town people insisted on a special committee to do a study and get a better understanding of why the funds are needed and where they would be appropriated to. After the committee was established, they did a study, and they determined the 2% was not needed. And Chatham is a town that has lost several hundred guest rooms over the past several years, so they are different than Harwich, because Harwich has, in fact, gained guest rooms by way of additional rooms at Waquasit and Whichmere Beach Club. Another interesting point, the board is, you know, again, asking to penalize the biggest taxpayers of this community, while at the same time, there are a few million dollars in uncollected taxes in the town of Harwich that they have not gone after from people that haven't paid their taxes. Why is that? Why haven't they been more aggressive with the millions of dollars that sit out there? Another point is that in doing so, just burdens these establishments and saying that these people come and flush toilets and don't pay for anything. They do. These guests are in your restaurants, they're in your small businesses, they are creating jobs, and this 2% puts a burden on the resorts. Several years ago, the town passed a 0.75% additional local tax on the restaurants. We still don't know where that money has gone to after several years. And I'll say this, every time places like Waquasit and Whichmere and other places raise their rates, which they do, the town sees more money. So when I was at the Select Board meeting a few weeks ago, there was this, they asked where this money goes to, and they couldn't even answer the question where this 4% goes to. And the other thing that I took issue with was, one of the attitudes was, well, every other town is doing it, so why shouldn't we do it? And there's a lot of reasons why that, why you shouldn't. And one is, this is the only town in, on the Cape, and one of the only places in Massachusetts that has a five-star resort that brings some of the wealthiest people around. And you don't wanna start discouraging this. The other thing is, New Hampshire is lowering their rooms tax by 0.5% next year, because they realize with the local short-term rentals, they're getting in excess of money. So I just want people to be smart, and I'm not, I think there should be no, and do a subcommittee, and get statistical information as to why they need this money, not just vote to raise 2% just because they want to. Thank you for your time.
Further debate on the motion. Mr. Waystack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not often I disagree with my friend and fellow Realtor, Mr. Guthrie, but in this case, I do. You know, I'm a Realtor. I don't like seeing taxes increase, but the community needs override that concern. And this community has felt that this additional tax will go to two specific areas, affordable housing and wastewater. And we understand how our wonderful resorts that we embrace bring in a lot of wealthy people. But there are also a lot of working-class people and others in this community who cannot afford a place to live. We debated this. The Select Board debated this. It was an open public hearing, talking about this. And 10 out of the communities on the Cape have a 6%. We have an affordable housing crisis in this community. This will start addressing that. I strongly urge the residents to vote this motion. Thank you.
Further debate. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Sharon Foster, and I live in West Harwich, and I am an inkeeper. So I own a sweet little boutique property, so that's where my perspective is coming from. I think this is a bad move for the businesses, because yes, we do have people coming in, and they're flushing the toilet, and then I'm sending them to Chatham and Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket and Provincetown to flush the toilet for the rest of the day. So they're not sitting in West Harwich flushing all day. I really resent the toilet flushing thing. I think it's belittling this. I really do think we do need to send money for the wastewater, and we do need to have it for affordable housing. With that said, I do not think the burden of finding extra funds should be falling on this industry segment, which is bringing people into the town to shop, to dine, and guess what? To maybe move here, because it is so beautiful and welcoming. We have an amazing, amazing seven villages here in West Harwich. So I hopped onto VRBO today, took a look one week in August to see how many residents are renting out their homes short-term, and I'm asking the Selectmen, do we know who these people are, and are they paying their occupancy and water taxes the way I am? Because if they are not, that's where the money is, folks. It's not taxing me another 2% to pass on to mine. It's taxing all the residents here who want all these wonderful things but don't wanna pay their part. So if you can honestly tell me that every resident in the seven villages of Harwich who is short-term renting their property is paying their share, then I will vote yes. Otherwise, I do not want to take the burden, because nobody else wants to. Thank you very much.
Further debate. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise to rebut some of the comments made by the first speaker. And I wanna yield much of my discussion to what our Chair of the Board of Assessors, Mr. Waystack, has said, because I couldn't say it better. But I do rise to refute some of the comments that were made by that original speaker. And I say that, recognizing that he and I have much in common. He now lives in the community that I moved from, to move here and live here. And so I'm as familiar with that community as I am with our community here. And that community, Braintree, raised their rooms tax more than a decade ago. The town of Harwich has kept this rooms tax where it is, as you can see in the motions book, since 1987. So for the suggestion to be made, or the direct accusation to be made, that the Board of Selectmen is bamboozling folks, is one that cannot go unrefuted. This board that presents this article tonight is also the same board that is actively going after those tax title errors that the previous speaker spoke of. So we need to balance the ledger to understand that this Board of Selectmen that presents this warrant tonight with this article is doing everything that is being suggested. What we're asking this evening for the adoption of this article is for Harwich to keep pace with our competitor communities, if you wanna look at it that way, to increase our rooms tax. And as a previous speaker said under previous articles, to not have it just go to the black hole known as the general fund, but specifically 25% to go to wastewater. Those funds will help us on wastewater and alleviate or reduce the borrowing or the debt that we need to do going forward if we build up that fund. The same can be said for the special fund on affordable housing. So we don't do this to bamboozle. We do this to try to relieve the burden of the other taxpayer, the property taxpayers. The town of Harwich has held the line on rooms taxes for more than two decades. The time is now to identify additional revenue sources and then earmark them to the two most important issues facing us here in Harwich and Cape Cod. And for those reasons, I urge you to adopt the article. Thank you.
Further debate. Mrs. McClary.
Thank you, Clara McClary. I support this article, and I just wanted to also speak to Mr. Guthrie's comments that Harwich is a very different place from Chatham. I don't think it's helpful to compare them. Every kid, I grew up here, I grew up on Cape Cod, and every kid that I know that grew up in Chatham, every single one of them cannot live in Chatham. It's not totally true of Harwich, and we need to work hard to make sure that it doesn't become true of Harwich. We have been incredibly successful in selling the charm and the attractiveness of Cape Cod. We don't need help doing that. We've, in fact, probably oversold Cape Cod, and that is why we are facing the wastewater crisis and the housing crisis. If we lose more and more year-round community, just in this past year, I could count five families I know that have totally left the region due to housing costs. The more we lose them, the more the resort industry and all of the retail have staffing problems. If you really wanna have a community where you just have all of these businesses and just a minimum of J-1 students who can run it and keep it all going just for the summer and then vanish, you know, you could have that, but that's not a community. I don't wanna live there. I think it's really sad what's happened in Chatham, and I want Harwich to be different from Chatham. I think we need to vote to support the wastewater costs and the affordable housing issue that are drowning our year-round community. Thank you.
Further debate.
As mentioned earlier, I have the white card, so...
You're the owner of the Waquasit?
Correct.
Okay. Any objection to him speaking?
Thank you. I appreciate your courtesy. And I just wanted to add the fact that, first and foremost, there are so many dear friends here. When you hear these debates, it really makes you realize the importance of this, these important issues like these considerations. And I wanna applaud the town for the appropriation mentality with regard to these tax increases, potential tax increases. As a business owner, it's never easy to encourage tax increases, and I feel that way, of course. But on the other hand, I do want to be seen as an important member of the community, to contribute to the important causes that exist here. Affordable housing is indeed a significant issue that needs to be addressed, and I certainly wanna do our fair share in addressing that, without a doubt. As I mentioned earlier, on wastewater, fully in support of finding ways to improve those circumstances. So I certainly understand the will of the people, at least I sense the will of the people in terms of a tax increase. And as one of the town's largest taxpayers, I'm good with it, as long as it's managed wisely and the appropriations are held accountable, because we're certainly more than willing to do our fair share as a member of this community and take great pride in our sense of place, and do not want our community to be overwhelmed or overrun with challenging situations. So just wanted to express those sentiments.
Thank you. Mr. McManus.
Just briefly, it's been said, you know, where's the money gone thus far, and some reference to the black hole of the general fund. The general fund isn't a black hole. It's what we pay for our police services and our fire services for. We pay for our schools. We make contributions to help support the Chamber of Commerce. We pay for our good roads and our road maintenance and our building maintenance. That's what the general fund is, and that's where that 0.75% meals tax went to. This increase will raise the receipts from the rooms tax from a million to a million and a half dollars. With what we, the two actions we just took, the million dollars that we received, the estimate that we receive now, which is currently going into the general fund, will now start, half of that will go into wastewater and housing, reducing what's available for payment of police and fire services, general government services, all the services that we rely on in our daily lives. By raising this tax, it will provide for an offset to those dedications, so that the hit to the general fund will only be $250,000 rather than $500,000. And I think it's, for the future and the town we all love to live in, I think it's a wise thing to do. Thank you.
Any further debate on Article Seven? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion on Article Seven is accept and adopt as printed. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the FY 2022 budget to fund cost of living adjustments, COLA, for the non-union personnel covered under the personal service contracts and/or the personnel bylaws and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $39,843 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article Eight is accept and adopt, and the sum of $39,843 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article Nine. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the FY 2022 Fire Department budget to implement the new contractual agreement between the Howard permanent firefighters, Local 2124 International Association of Firefighters, and the town of Howard and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $86,957,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article Nine's been made and seconded. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $86,957, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article Ten. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the FY 22 Water Department budget to implement the new contractual agreement between the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, Local Lodge 264 and District 38, AFL-CIO, and the town of Howard. Mr. Chori.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $38,245 be transferred from Water Enterprise retained earnings for this purpose.
Motion made and seconded under Article Ten. It's accept and adopt. The amount is $38,245, and it's proposed to be transferred from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings account. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put them out to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article Eleven. See if the town will vote to appropriate $217,894.56 to pay costs of acquiring a fire quint apparatus, and to determine whether this amount shall be transferred from surplus bond proceeds or otherwise provided. Mr. Chori.
I move the sum of $217,894.56 be appropriated to pay the cost of acquiring a fire quint apparatus, including the payment of a cost incidental or related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, $217,894.56 shall be transferred from the proceeds of bonds issued in June of 2019 to pay the cost of the construction of a fire station. The project is complete, no further liability remains, and the funds are no longer needed to complete this project as provided by Master General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty.
Okay, the motion under Article Eleven, a little longer than the article, so I'll just read it for you again. It does move the sum of $217,894.56. It's appropriated to pay the cost of acquiring the fire quint apparatus, including the payment of costs incidental and related thereto. And then, to meet the appropriation, the $217,894.56 shall be transferred from proceeds of the bonds that were issued in June of 2019 to pay the cost of the construction of the fire station. Which project, meaning the fire station, is complete, and no further liability remains, and the funds are no longer needed to complete that project, all is provided for under General Law's Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty. All is provided for under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20. Debate on Article XI. Mr. DeBarker?
Just for a quarter million dollars, what is a fire quint apparatus, Mr. Moderator?
I see the chief rising.
David Blank, Fire Chief. So typical fire apparatus, you have a ladder truck, you have an engine company. Engine has hose and water. Ladder truck has the ladders, big aerial on the roof. A quint combines all those functions together, so it has five functions in one. So it's going to replace two vehicles. We're replacing an engine that was supposed to be replaced in 2019, and we're replacing a ladder truck that was due to be replaced in 2024.
Five and one, Mr. DeBarker. Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read under Article XI, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article XII, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise a parcel of land consisting of two acres, more or less, located off Pleasant Lake Avenue, Route 124, and identified on Assessors Map 82, parcel R5. There's a copy of a—of a portion of the Assessors' map, and you can see it's outlined in black there. And to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for the acquisition, including all costs incidental and related thereto, provided that upon acquisition of said parcel by the town, said parcel be transferred to the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust to be held for affordable housing purposes, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and take any and all actions as may be necessary or convenient to accomplish the foregoing. Mr. Chori?
I move this article be accepted and adopted, it's printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $170,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
You might want to mention the 25 for the warrant. Yeah, so the motion moves the article, accept and adopt, but the sum is $170,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. And as Mr. Chori pointed out to me, the estimated cost in your warrant book was 25, but this figure is 170,000, and maybe Mr. Howell's going to speak to that. Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This property is located smack dab in the middle of a property that the Affordable Housing Trust was able to purchase over the last six months, the so-called Marsline property. It's across from the Park and Ride. It literally—there's property here, there's property here, right in the middle, there's this property. I know that the number seems like sticker shock, but it's an owner's unknown property. We still don't know if there's anyone that's going to come forward to be able to stake a claim on this, whether it's fractional or owning it in whole. What we do know is that the law provides for us to do due diligence to try to find them, and it also requires us to put money aside just in case somebody comes. No one is suggesting that we're just going to dump off $170,000 to anybody right now. What this is going to do is sequester that amount in the event that something happens, because I can tell you, we can't plan on what we're going to be building in that area unless we know what the area is. So we're pretty much stalled with—we brought this great property, but we really want to know what the status of that central portion is, and the longer that that takes to go forth—to be in limbo, the longer we're going to have to wait to figure out what we can build on that property for affordable housing. So I urge your support for this. No money will be expended unless it winds up that somebody makes a legitimate claim.
Further debate on the motion under Article XII? And I assume the amount, Mr. Howell, came from the town's appraisal?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Mr. Ford.
Oh, Highland, I couldn't see you behind the mask.
You can't tell from the hair?
No.
A question I have is, all of us came to town meeting with a printed, published warrant stating an amount of $25,000. We're now being told 170. I recall over many, many years of town meeting that money didn't go up from the warrant. It could go down, but I feel like we get in Shanghai here on a published document that is now multiple times of what was published. I'm feeling a little gobsmacked here, and I'm going to vote against this regardless of whether I support affordable housing, which I do, but I think this was bait and switch like big time. I'm pretty disappointed in that.
Just a distinction, Ms. Sebula. The 25,000 you refer to is the estimated cost. You're correct. When the amount appears in the body of the article itself, then we could have a scope issue where people are not on notice that it might cost more than that amount. But this article doesn't put an amount in the article itself. Now, that may be a technicality, but it is important from a procedural standpoint, because the article simply says a sufficient sum of money. And so that makes the motion properly before the meeting. So it's a legal motion, it's within the scope. That said, I agree there's a big discrepancy between the estimated cost and the amount that is now moved in the motion. Does anyone even want to issue—or address the issue of the appraisal, or Mr. Powers? You're off.
That was intentional.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You can hear me now. As previous speakers have said, when the warrant article—when the warrant was being drafted with articles, the selectmen had made the decision to pursue this property to support the Affordable Housing Trust. What you don't really see in the motion there is the missing tooth aspect of the property there. The extensive work that was done by the Affordable Housing Trust included survey work, and the surveyor had difficulty coming up with any discernible ownership regarding that property. Therefore, the board looked at that and said that it is a potential taking for the town because we don't expect anyone to be able to come forward at any time with a significant claim to that property. Procedurally, as we build the warrant, we have to put in a dollar amount, recognizing that the greater burden is for the appraisal. The appraisal for this property was requested as the selectmen—the night that the selectmen put the article in, and we received it last week, and we were shocked when it came in at $170,000, because the appraiser is talking about the fact that this property is a butt's on a townway. The town would say that it was a cart path, that this property could have utilities. The town would say that there are no utilities anywhere in the near vicinity. Having said that, there was ample discussion this evening at a joint meeting between the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen on this very topic and the very concern. And the reality is, we had to do the appraisal, we had to have that in hand before this article could be adopted, and that's why you see the $170,000 figure. The town has every intention of seeking a second appraisal, and one that we would expect to be more in line with a lower value. Now, if this action is adopted tonight, that sets aside the $170,000, as the previous speaker said, is put in escrow, should claims come down the line. We are looking for a second appraisal because the town would argue that we don't agree to the full value of the land. Having said all that, we're aware of the marketplace, and we know right now that what's going on in the marketplace is absolutely crazy, and the town expects this value to not exceed $170,000. Now, I don't come up here and say that lightly. As I mentioned to the Finance Committee, there are articles that we talked about before where we were contemplating almost $400,000 to come from free cash. We made a savings there. This dollar amount is $145,000 above the estimated cost, which was intended to be a mere placeholder. We did not anticipate it to come in that low, but—in other words, put there for the appraisal. My overall bottom line is, we still are at a net-net positive gain for town meeting, even if we adopt this. The overall point is, $170,000 put in escrow, if somebody should make a claim that the town took their land in the future, does not equate to those dollars being paid out in damages, and more importantly, as was said before, it allows the town to move on seven parcels that it represents at this time. The Town of Harwich is best opportunity for the Town of Harwich to present an affordable housing project. For those reasons and more, I would urge that you adopt the article. Thank you.
This lady over here to my right?
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, Harwich Center. As any of you who know me knows, all I do is run around screaming, "We need affordable housing, we need affordable housing, we need affordable housing." So I am going to vote for this article regardless, but I would just like to know if the Finance Committee, after being given a number that was $150,000 more than the article they voted on, took another vote.
Mr. Chori, question is, did the FinCom revoke their recommendation on this article?
As stated by Mr. Powers, we did not take a vote. We debated it, and then we met jointly with the selectmen and heard the explanation, because we just learned about this new appraisal today, approximately about noon time today. And so there wasn't a lot of discussion for us to learn from between noon time and when we met with the selectmen at 6:00 PM. So we discussed it with the selectmen at 6:00 PM, and we spent about 15, 20 minutes almost debating this article. And we came up, as Mr. Powers said, in the best interest of the town, $170,000 is well spent, and it is going in escrow, and we'd have to see how it plays itself out.
I just—my—the reason I ask the question is, we had this problem at the last town meeting when land numbers and articles were changed on people with no notice. And I just—I'm fully in support of this article, don't get me wrong, and if it's $170,000, that's fine. We need the land, we need the affordable housing, but I'm just up here in agreement with Ms. Sebula that we've got to make a change in the way things happen, because we should not be asked to vote on numbers that are completely different than the numbers that are printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Fully understand.
Ms. Underwood?
You got it right this time.
I did.
Judith Underwood, Harwich Center, Water and Wastewater Commissioner, but also on the Affordable Housing Trust. Clearly, the number changed. However, the challenge to housing has not changed. We have a huge opportunity here. We have been gifted with a beautiful piece of land in this town from a gentleman's family that really cares about this town going forward. Adding in these two parcels is significant, huge. So please support it. You can deal with the details later, but support this. Do the right thing.
Any further debate on the motion under Article XII? Mr. Crowell? I'm used to seeing you in the very back of the hall, Mr. Crowell, not the front.
My glasses fog up with the mask on, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, okay, so that's what brings you up close.
Thank you. I just have a question, two questions. One is, when this money goes into escrow, how long does it stay in escrow? Number one. Number two, given that it's assessed to owners unknown, in the unlikely event someone does come forward, more than likely, no one will come forward. If they don't come forward, what happens to the money? Does it go back to the town fund? So it's not really costing us $170,000. We're not paying anybody that.
All good questions, but I'll defer to Town Council to answer them. He has the advantage of a long walk to the microphone, so he can formulate his response, Mr. Crowell.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. So once—if in fact, the Board of Selectmen vote to sign an order of taking, and that's recorded, there's a three-year period when someone can make a claim on that property. That is assuming that the town can demonstrate through sufficient due diligence that it did everything it could to try to identify anyone with an interest in that property. And assuming that no one comes forward and our research does not identify any owners, then that money can come back—to will come out of escrow and be returned to the general fund.
Thank you.
That doesn't prohibit someone, I'll just say, six years down the line, from coming forward and arguing that sufficient due diligence was not performed. But I'm going to be retired by then, so good luck.
Mr. Crowell will be here, though. He'll be asking somebody the question.
Thank you, Ms. Mart.
Any further debate on the motion under Article XII? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Handler, 13 Moss Hill Road. I can only assume that if this property is an owner unknown property, that there are probably taxes owed on this property. What would happen if the rightful owner came forward to claim the property and there were—yeah, I'm going to give you a little time to get up there. If the rightful owner were to come forward and claim the property, but there was an outstanding tax bill, is it possible that that could offset the cost of the purchase?
Mr. Giorgio?
Mr. Moderator, the answer to that question—excuse me—is yes. You could potentially offset the amount that the town would owe based upon whatever the tax title account is at that point. Although, the town administrator has informed me that this parcel does not actually appear in the Assessors' database. So like many properties here in Harwich, we have pretty bad title, and that's one of the reasons why the Board of Selectmen want to pursue it as an eminent domain taking. The article does permit a purchase or acceptance by gift, but that's why you would go with eminent domain in order to essentially clear out the title.
Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article XII? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Since eminent domain is contemplated, a two-thirds majority is required. The motion is accept and adopt, and the sum is $170,000. All those in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I rule that it did get the necessary two-thirds majority. Article 13, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow a sufficient sum of money as may be required to purchase and equip one ambulance for the Fire Department and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori?
I move this article be accepted and adopted, it's printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $378,676 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 13 is accept and adopt. The sum is $378,676, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 14, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to pay unpaid bills of prior years as provided for in Chapter 44, Section 64, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, it's printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $10,405.33 be transferred from accounts and into amounts set forth in the warrant for this purpose.
The motion is accept and adopt. The amount is $10,405.33, and it moves the amounts listed in your warrant. No changes. Unpaid bills at a special town meeting require a nine-tenths majority to pass. So unless I get a unanimous vote, I'll have to take a standing count. So all those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor of adjournment, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Meeting's adjourned. All those opposed may remain.